All right, thank you. I would like to welcome everybody to our work session of Wednesday, November 9th, on a different day today because of Election Day yesterday. So, we're gonna just move right in and get started. We're gonna start quickly with members of our... Sorry, make you guys wait even a couple minutes longer. We're gonna start with members of our Sustainability Advisory Board, just to talk to us a little bit about curbside food waste collection. I know it's been a hot topic. You brought it up, we've had people asking us about it. I know there are concerns, I'm gonna preface this so you know that, tell me about it, that we're gonna try to help the environment by having people, you know, by having food compost picked up at everyone's driveway, but that's also going to then entail trucks and environmental pollution as well. So, it's that dichotomy that I'd love you to kind of talk to us about. So, come on down.
One thing before Jennifer gets started, I just want to thank the board for passing the resolution about the Environmental Bond Act. Obviously, you know it went overwhelmingly yesterday. And we're obviously hoping that Newcastle can take advantage of some of the monies that'll be available. But again, thank you to the board.
And just so you know, I already spoke to Chris Burdick today, and said now that that passed, as soon as they get a bit more of a handle on what type of grant opportunities will be available, we'd like him to come down and meet with us here at the board and explain those to us.
Got it, yeah. Okay, thanks.
All right, well, I do have a hand.
We would be disappointed if you didn't.
But, we can't get it to Ally and Chris, so... Okay.
All right.
So, we sent the town board an RFP draft for doing curbside food scrap recycling. And Ed, maybe at some point you can address why we need the RFP. Well, let me explain a little bit about what we have. So, what we're proposing is a voluntary program for residents. And how it works is, a resident gets a bin, and a company, a contractor picks up that bin once a week that the resident has put food scraps into. The relationship is really between the resident and the contractor, not the town. So, we have one interested contractor who said they would charge $32 a week to do it. But, we have to do this RFP to... $32 a month, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
A month, a month.
Wow.
Sorry, that's right, that's right, a month. We put this together very quickly.
Thank you.
There would be no cost to Newcastle to do it, but there's still this RFP requirement that we have to go through to get the contractor. And, the one contractor that we've spoken to about doing this, they're requiring 50 residents, 50 households to participate in order to do it. So, we'd have to wait and go through the process and see what happens. So, we've just listed a few things about why composting. You know, why would you compost? And I think most people know that it's a good thing for the environment. But, just to talk about a few of those things, it reduces the material entering the waste stream, improves soil health and lessens erosion, conserves water, reduces the use of chemical fertilizers, and it lowers the carbon footprint. And so, there is an environmental impact. And what we've done, we did a preliminary analysis, and you can see on the back, we've actually done the analysis for you, that when you compost, if we have curbside composting, there would be less waste to be incinerated, and there would be a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. So, yes, the truck's truck, really, one truck, would generate greenhouse gas emissions, but then the waste itself is no longer being incinerated, and so you'd have that reduction. So, our net result is a reduction in greenhouse gas emissions.
So, thank you. So, just to play devil's advocate, might we not be better off getting discounts for people on backyard composting bins and teaching them how to do that in their backyard?
Yeah, so we've been doing that for probably 15 years, at least. And, a lot of residents don't want to do backyard composting. So, this is, backyard composting is the ideal. If everyone would do that...
It's ideal.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great if everyone did it, but a lot of people don't wanna do it. And so, this way, you could still do the composting, but it then removes it from their property, and hopefully, we would get more residents to do it.
Do you know if other towns are doing it? So that there would be, you know, an effort and a greater impact?
Other towns are doing it already.
Right.
Yes, Scarsdale does it, Bedford does it, um, I think Mamaroneck?
Pelham, Westport, Greenwich, Wilton.
Yeah, a lot of Connecticut towns are doing it.
Right, I'm just curious as to whether you think nearby towns are more inclined to do it if their neighbors are doing it?
I think people will be more...
That might make it easier, just to have a greater impact.
Well, I think people, even within Newcastle, the more people do it, the more people hear about it. You know, to the extent that residents are very concerned about the climate crisis, and this will make a meaningful impact on it, we could get more residents involved in doing it.
Hi, I just wanted to make a comment from home. I have a very good friend in town that is always composting and always talking about her composting, and went to sanitation to drop it off, and the bin spilled in the trunk of her car. So, I'm, and it took her a very long time to get the stench out. So, I love this idea, I think it's great. I think it would definitely incentivize people. I know a lot of people in town want to do more for the environment. They are worried about attracting animals and other critters, because that's what happens when you have a compost bin near your home or outside your home. And I think this does make it a little bit easier. So, I appreciate you coming here tonight and letting us know that there are some other options.
Quick question, would there be a way for people participating in this program to actually then purchase the compost?
Ah, yeah, well, the one contractor we're aware of is Curbside Compost. And, I'm not sure that Santa Pro would be willing to do this for us when it's on a voluntary basis. Curbside compost sells the compost back to residents.
Okay.
So, they will deliver it when they pick up, if you arrange with them?
Right. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, I'm with Ally. I mean, we do it, and, you know, we're sort of committed to doing it, but, you know, certainly, I think you've gotta really be committed, because it can get, it can get icky. So, if we can make it easier for people, that'd be great.
All right, any other questions? So, what would be next steps if we chose to move forward with this?
So, next steps would be an RFP. So, the town, the town contracts for solid waste disposal pursuant to its local law, so that one contractor provides that service townwide. Not all towns do it that way, in other towns, some other towns. Individual residents contract directly with their hauler. So, the RFP is necessary here because the town is looking for a single service provider that would make this service available to residents. So, the RFP would be the next step. If the board wants to authorize that, we would put it in final form and it would be issued.
Perfect. And then again, it's just something that we would sort of contract with a provider, but then the residents would pay individually to that provider to pick up and additional if they want delivery.
Right, and the RFP's already been drafted.
Yep.
So, I worked with Drew.
To do it. And what about the billing?
And the subscription, I was just gonna say, I think, I think my understanding is the subscription could either be monthly or maybe there's a discount for like an annual.
Right, right, the $32 a month. Fix that on your sheet. Or 300, at least with one contractor, $352 a year. So, it's a discount if you go for a year. And the, and the contract is, the one contractor we've spoken to, they don't actually even have a contract, but the arrangement is between the resident and the contractor directly, and they just bill.
They get billed directly.
Yeah, get billed directly. And you can, you can opt in and out, you're not locked in.
Yeah, we would want it to be very clear that this is not a contract that we're administering.
And I guess just maybe for everyone's benefit, maybe Ed, explain why the RFP process is necessary, given that, you know, this is just an individual contract directly with the vendor.
My understanding, it's a contract with the town. The town then makes the service available to residents on a subscription basis, but the town is the party, the counterparty, and that's pursuant to local law. We have a local law on the books with respect to solid waste removal. That's the framework in which the town deals with this particular service.
I mean, I'm just on the Curbside Compost site, and there's a whole section on residential signup. Looks like I could fill this out right here.
Yeah, Curbside Compost, you can, you can sign up with them, but they need, in order to come into our town, they need a certain number of households to participate.
I see.
So, they keep, if you sign up there right now, they keep a tally...
Waiting list.
And you're on a waiting list until they get enough.
Got it, yeah. So, if I go, if I go through this, they'll basically ding me until the town gets to that critical mass.
Right, right, and, and so that arrangement could happen without involvement. There's no way to prevent that. But then, the town, and our understanding is the Sustainability Advisory Board cannot be involved at all, because it's being done directly with the residents.
So, if we enter into a, we're essentially entering into a contract then with this provider to say, "Do this for our town." If they don't have 50 people, or do we have liability if someone then doesn't pay them? What, why are we entering into this contract? Why can't we just advertise and say, "The town really likes this provider. We're encouraging everybody to utilize this provider and get 50 people," or can we not do that because we're promoting a business then?
Yeah, I don't, I think the idea was to achieve uniformity, to have a single source provider. I don't...
Right, we wanted to try to avoid having three different vendors crisscrossing town picking up compost because somebody came in at $30 or whatever.
All right, so one would be licensed, then that would be the provider.
But it doesn't get, put any liability on the town for anything.
Yeah.
Well, what happens with the composting operation currently at the recycling center? Goes away?
Oh, no, 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 we would keep.
I think we'd keep that.
The drop-off, the drop-off we would keep.
Because there may be people who can't.
Some people who don't want to...
Can't afford the $32 a month or...
You drop off right now with no fee.
Right, to the resident, right. But it's, it's another responsibility for my, you know, my DPW guys.
I think we might monitor it, and if everyone starts to use this service and we're getting very little drop-offs, we may wanna just discontinue that, or...
I think you'll, I think you'll always have residents who would wanna do the drop-off because they don't have to pay for it. So, I mean, this is requiring a...
We can see, but we may be able to make that, you know, depending on how many people, it may be much smaller. We can monitor it and see.
I mean, right now, there's a contract with Santa Pro to do that pickup.
Yeah. Okay.
I think it's a great idea, thank you so much for taking the time.
And I don't, just speaking on behalf of me, but I think it's on the rest of the board. I don't see why we wouldn't do this.
Yeah, I agree.
Does anyone have an objection?
No, I think it's fantastic, and I think we should do it, yeah.
So, it's not, can't make a formal resolution because we don't have everyone in person, but I, I think this is something we wanna move forward.
So, Ed, maybe you'll just take a look at it and make sure that, you know, whatever it needs to be, polished up on it.
All right. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, exciting. Um, we also though should do maybe a course, Jen, about people who do wanna do it in the backyard. Maybe we can do another course...
Yeah, we could do that.
To educate people as how to do that.
Sure.
Okay?
Okay.
Give you something else to do.
Yeah.
All right, um, thank you. Okay, so we are moving on, thank you for being patient, to a discussion about 50 North Greeley Avenue. It's good to see everybody again. I think this is the first kind of formal now discussion with, as to what we may be doing, so I'm just gonna tell you to take it away.
We're gonna give it to Don.
Hi, Don.
That's a surprise. Hello, everybody from Chicago, how are you? Happy to be here digitally. But as the first time we presented, really what we wanna do is have the team, which is Jeff, I can't see everybody there, but I think it's Jeff and Andrew from Graham Organsky, and Phil. Is Phil there, Jeff, Don?
Phil's here, and then that's here.
And then that is there. So, we have our architect, our developer, our planner, and our...
A little wave, like, who's who?
Terrific lawyer. And, you know, we, I think everybody knows that we've put together a very, very professional and experienced and local team to try and do the best for this, to find the highest best use for our property. And, a lot of it you're familiar with, but we're gonna re-present tonight the basics. And I think actually, as Jeff said, or as you said, Lisa, speak to the actual requests that we're making for the change that's required to permit the development we're seeking to do. So, with that, I'm going to hand it to Jeff, I think.
All right, thanks, Don.
Thank you.
To bring us back here again, we wanted to present to you tonight, Don's family has owned the property for...
Do you wanna just, for the people at home, say your name and...
So, I'm Jeffrey Davis. I'm part of the development team, working with Don and his family to bring new life to 50 North Greeley. And hopefully, everybody will enjoy instead of the Rite Aid that is sitting there dark and empty. So, one of the things that we like to do, and the team that we have here, then that born is our planner, and Drew Ruff is our architect, and Phil Carmel is our lawyer. And Heath in the back there put this whole thing together for us. So, if you don't like it, blame him. One of the things we do whenever we look at the development in whatever town we're in, is we sit down with representatives from the town, whether it be the board, planner, council, community members, and ask everybody what they'd like to see on the site. Some people tell us nothing. Some people give us their opinion of what they'd like, whether it be a restaurant, residential, what height they want, etc. We take all of that back and we start planning a building. What you're gonna see from Andrew when he comes up here is what we've come up with today. We've taken everybody's thoughts and what we think is, we've come up with a pretty good development for this site that is inclusive of everybody's comments and concerns to the best of our ability with the challenging site that exists, up against train tracks, comes to a corner, and everything you can imagine difficult to be on a site. Some of the things that we've come up with to meet some of the concerns are, we've offered to build a site that has more affordable housing in it with a combination of straight affordable and workforce housing. Instead of the normal 10% that is looked for in the town, we're doing 12% with a combination of 10% straight affordable and 2% workforce housing. We've taken a retail footprint and we've increased that retail footprint and the request of the community. And for that purpose, because with the feedback we've received is that everybody would like to see some type of community restaurant, whether it be a diner or something of that nature, to really enliven this part of town, because if you drove by there tonight, you would see it's dark and empty. So, by putting something there that people could go to with their families or just generally to dine at, it would enliven it pretty much a lot better than it is today. We can talk a little bit about the parking concerns by doing that diner and retail that bring to the property, but we feel that with our concept of doing one parking spot for our residents and car sharing, which is a big thing that we do in our developments, where our residents will be able to rent a car by the hour. It'll be electric cars, either a Tesla or Rivian pickup truck if you need to go to Home Depot. And for every car that we have, according to the studies that were done at UC Berkeley, one car sharing car reduces five parking spaces. And in fact, where was it that they actually wrote it into their code already?
Santa Monica.
In Santa Monica, because of car sharing, they changed the code that for every car sharing car there is, they reduce the requirement by two parking spots. So, not only are we doing it, but other communities have actually already put it into their code so far. In addition, we have electric scooters you can rent by some of the partners we program with in our rental products in the building, bike storage, bike rental. So, we're promoting that you're right next to a train station, you do not need to have a car. I'm saying this, I'm the wrong person to be saying this. I have too many cars, I'm not renting here. I'm not your eco-green guy. Andrew's gonna talk about that. But this is a building built and designed for people that wanna live in a net zero carbon building, that don't need to have a car, they wanna hop on a train, go to the city, they wanna use a car sharing car, they don't need a car here.
So, just to interrupt you for one second, these are all gonna be rentals, correct?
These are rentals.
So, then in the rental agreement, we'll say you're only allowed one car?
You're allowed one spot, and you have to rent the spot, it's not free. So, people paying for a car, paying for gas, paying for insurance, paying to rent the car, I can tell you, the younger generations don't wanna do it. We have rental buildings in the city. The amount of people that actually rent parking spots, when you look generationally through the building, the younger generations do not rent cars. They rent Dyson vacuums from us in our buildings because they don't wanna own a vacuum.
Have you seen this configuration in other Westchester towns? Because obviously, you need a car to get out of town, you know? Their lives aren't going to be just centered in town. So, with the car sharing, I mean, how...
So, not car sharing as much, because car sharing is somewhat newer, but the parking statistics, New Rochelle, Pelham, where else? Mamaroneck? They've all gone one-to-one.
Peekskill.
Peekskill. They've all reduced their parking counts one-to-one in their towns because people are reducing how many cars they need. And if you look at going to lease a car in the last six months, your car leasing payments have skyrocketed because of rates that people just aren't doing it. I mean, the cost of having a car, the cost of gas, the cost of insurance is skyrocketing. People are looking at what it costs to rent a car by the hour and the amount of time your car sits there. We've included in our package the study for the car sharing. It's astonishing what it does now. And if you think about how much time your car sits there. And again, I'm not the person that would be renting there, a lot of us wouldn't be. But a lot of the people that are looking to live in these types of buildings do not want a car sitting there and paying for it when they don't need to. They want their disposable income, they wanna travel, they wanna get on a train, get in an Uber, get in a car share, bike, scooter. Times are changing, us keeping up with them is the harder part of it. And thinking towards the future of where it's gonna be, by 2030, they say one in 10 cars will be a car sharing, which next will be somebody else driving a Nados.
Well, it'd be interesting too, if the chapline is ever built, people can actually walk or ride bikes from this hamlet up to, up to, you know, the development up there where it has Whole Foods and, and other things.
Yeah, I think we would almost really need that. And look, I would love to make something work there, I really would. So, but being realistic, I think these other towns, like Mamaroneck and the other ones you've, you've mentioned, have a lot more infrastructure and retail around them. Like, we just have a small town with a small market, so people would have to get to other markets. So, if they could get to Chapel Court Crossing easily, you know...
There's Uber.
I, I think that, you know, we need to think about this on a holistic scale, you know, within the town itself.
But again, we'll have one car per apartment.
Right, right.
We're not saying we're not putting parking in.
Right.
There's parking for every resident.
Right.
So, and with the parking, bike storage, another thing we're doing, because we want this to be an activated area, we're increasing the footprint of the sidewalk and we're increasing the width of it. So, there'll be much more outdoor seating and outdoor space. So, we're making it an additional eight feet wide for landscaping entry pits in front of the buildings.
And Jeff, from, sorry, remind me that, that, that area is accessible to the public, right?
Correct. A lot of these outdoor areas in front of the building are all landscape, outdoor seating. There will be outdoor seating for the potential restaurant or retailer, whatever it ends up being, that'll be for them, but a lot of this is outdoor area accessible to the public.
Right.
So, we're not just talking about building green and checking off boxes, LEED certified or whatnot, this is a net zero carbon building. This is at the forefront, it's mass timber. I'm not gonna pretend I know everything about it. This is why you have Andrew, and he's gonna take it from here. And hopefully, you like what we're designing.
How many, just remind me, how many apartments are you proposing?
Forty-five apartments.
All good.
All good.
I'll come grab that in a minute.
He's got a...
He's show and tell. I don't know if the presentation is still available?
I believe it is.
Excellent, all right. Describing this, we'll challenge it without pictures. So, you can go to the next slide.
Can you just say your name?
Yeah, of course, yeah. So, I'm Andrew Ruff. I'm the research director at Regency Architecture, based in New Haven, Connecticut. We're the architect for this project. And alongside us, not represented as part of the design team here tonight, is Langin, who's the civil engineer. So, his work has been, contributed to the application that you've seen. So, I'll just quickly walk through the design as it stands today. Some of the features that we're particularly proud of including in the project. So, obviously, the site here, you can see outlined, is the, both the existing Rite Aid property and the parking lot adjacent to the south. Again, the next slide. And what we're proposing, as Jeff said, at the, at the public realm is a variety of spaces. So, one is fairly generous green courtyard spaces. And so, that's mews running along the side of the building, public courtyards, setbacks beyond what's required to create a kind of more activated public sphere.
And those are ground level?
Those are ground level, exactly. The red you see in this is the commercial area that we've allocated in the project. That's 6,600 square feet, which is a fairly significant ratio for the building, for building this type. But this is, again, as Jeff said, we've heard pretty loud and clear from the community that not only types of uses they'd like to see, but a diversity. And so, allowing for potential subdivision for multiple retailers or commercial storefronts. And then the yellow are amenities for the tenants. And so, those are distributed more towards the ends, but that's basically where residents of the building would, would engage in. So, that's lobbies, bike storage, gym, etc. So, again, public facing, publicly visible, not necessarily accessible to the public. And then I'll use this just to quickly note that, so the, the parking, you don't really see it here, that's the point. So, the parking is pushed back along the train tracks. And if you go to the next slide, we can see that a bit more clearly. So, this is the existing site plan as it is today, next slide. And this is the proposed ground floor. Again, same color scheme as the aerial image, but you can see the two lanes of parking running along the west side of the property butting the railroad tracks. And so, you know, that's the least valuable part of the property. You know, it's noisy, it's dark, it's away from the street. That's the best place to put something that we don't wanna see. We don't really wanna see parking in a, in a development. And so, maximizing the use of that, what would otherwise be a fairly challenging property to develop for parking, seems like the highest and best use. And then also using public facing amenities to screen that from the street. You can go to the next slide. So, this is a typical upper floor plan. So, levels two through four would be apartments. And you can see it's a kind of a credulated configuration where we have kind of narrower bars of apartments that are facing onto North Greeley, separated by courtyards. And so, those, those three courtyards that are separated in the middle, those are basically elevated, one floor above the street level. So, it's planted, that would be, that would be visible, it would be essentially greeny in the street, but it's, it's a private amenity for the tenants of the building. And so, you can see here, it's a mixture of one...
Unmute over there.
So, so there are three studios. There are 21 one bedrooms and 21 two bedrooms. The next slide, please. And then the roof scape is proposing a series of folded gable roofs. That would be a mixture of planted roofs and PB generating surfaces. And then I guess, actually, if you go back one slide, I'll just quickly mention, we've, we've intentionally moved all the apartments... we've, we've intentionally moved all the apartments away from the railroad lines so that, uh, you know, every apartment has the ability to open out to light and air and have natural ventilation that isn't impacted by the noise and dust of Metro North. Um, so that was, uh, you know, as opposed to some other projects that are built along train lines that, you know, place apartments along there, I think, we think to detriment of the residents. We've essentially sacrificed that entire four hundred and thirty feet, um, for back of house space so that we are giving the, kind of the best quality of life to the residents that we can. If you can skip ahead, yeah, skip this one, lovely. So this is a, a section, uh, east-west, uh, through North Greeley, through the building. Uh, you can see the train there, um, next to the, the bus depot. Uh, and so this is a section showing the scale of the building, uh, especially in relationship to, since it's a section of the town as it goes up the hill towards King Street. And so the, the height of the building is four stories with a, with a maximum, our average height of fifty feet. Um, and you can see how the courtyard stepped back from the street. And so we are, we are trying to create as much light and air, um, along North Greeley as we can, while maintaining a density that we think is, is appropriate and convivial, uh, for, for what is essentially urban construction. And go to the next slide, please. Uh, this is, this is a, a, just a quick rendering of the facade, um, from North Greeley. And so you can see the individual essentially, uh, volumes of the building that extend out to North Greeley. Um, and then there's a kind of a rear uh, facade that's, that's pushed back past the courtyard. So really from, uh, from the street, this would appear more like four buildings, uh, with a serrated ground floor than it would a single building with a, again, a four hundred foot street wall, which we're very uh, keen to avoid.
Are those, just go back one second, those walls there that are, you know, the first floor where the retail places, are those glass or brick?
Both. So there's a combination of storefront and there, and in some cases, we have, we have solid walls. So it was a back and fast mechanical space, but um, a, a fair amount of, of glazing. And you can see that probably clearer in the renderings. Uh, yeah, next slide, please. Uh, and again, this is just a slight more detailed section, uh, showing the building. Uh, so you see, uh, at the bottom, we have a, the covered parking. On the street side, we have, uh, in some cases, a fairly narrow band. But again, we're, we're trying to activate that section, so parking isn't the thing that's, that's visible from the street. So in this case, this is cut through the, the bicycle parking room. Obviously, the planted courtyards, that's available to the uh, apartments as an amenity space. Um, and then the, the three floors of, of housing above. Next slide. So the material palette that we're looking at is a kind of a wide use of natural materials. And that ranges from engineered wood siding to, to uh, brick colorations that's similar to other buildings that are in Chappaqua, um, as well as exposing the, the timber structure, um, and a fair amount of, of storefront glazing. And so if you go to the next slide, I'll quickly talk about. Yeah, the show and tell piece, uh, so, so as Jeff mentioned, this is, uh, we're proposing to build this out of, uh, engineered mass timber. So these are a, a, a variety of laminated timber panels and beams and columns. Uh, so this is a, a fairly small cross-section, so this is a building, uh, in New Haven, that's currently in construction. This was taken three days ago.
Um, can those of you on the Zoom, can you just mute yourselves, cuz we can hear you? Thank you.
No. Um, so this, so this project, multifamily housing, uh, in New Haven, that, again, this is just a couple of days old. Uh, the panels are coming to site, uh, in large sections, so this isn't two by fours, um, coming on a pallet. These are uh, pre-engineered, prefabricated, large format panels. And so they're, they're ten feet by forty feet. Um, and they come off a truck, uh, basically directly onto the building. And so certainly for areas where we have urban construction with a lot of traffic or not a lot of laydown space, this is a crew of, of four carpenters, one crane operator, and then a truck that arrives once a day. Uh, and that's the entire construction site. Uh, and so the only sound that you're hearing is the crane and screw guns. Uh, and uh, a, a building like this would go up in a, a matter of, you know, probably a couple of months for eighty-five thousand square foot building. Uh, so again, we're, we're very conscious that not only does the building need to be a good neighbor after it's built and occupied, but it needs to be a good neighbor during construction. Um, and so this, this strategy is, you know, from a construction standpoint, really minimal to that, and you can go to the next slide. And again, you can just see that this is, this is the busiest the construction site is. Um, and you can see there's, there's, we have four cars in the parking lot for the, for the career. This isn't, we're not talking about kind of mobilizing a huge construction site, um, for building up the scale. Uh, obviously, beyond constructability, it's an incredibly environmentally friendly product. And so this is a carbon storing material, it's a high-performance material. It's a, it, it essentially buffers the interior air climates, so you reduce your energy loads. It's, it's a tight construction, so you don't have any air leakage. Um, so typically, when we build like this, we can build to passive house standards. Um, so it means that the, the operating expenses for the tenants or for the management is, is incredibly low. Um, not to mention the carbon footprint of the building over its lifetime. So, you know, this strategy is looking to reduce the embodied carbon of the building as it's built, store that carbon in the building, and then as it's operated, uh, reduce its carbon footprint for the long term. So really tackling two critical scopes, uh, in the construction industry, uh, next slide. And so this is just an example of what the interior might look like. Um, so uh, exposed natural wood finishes, um, that's essentially, that is the structural members that you're seeing. A fair amount of glazing, um, the next slide. Uh, and then uh, another benefit of the system is that we, because the floor package is so thin relative to conventional construction, we're able to get essentially more voluminous spaces out of a smaller height. Uh, and so this is something that we're able to, to fit in, uh, four stories, including a ground floor commercial space and I would say fairly high-end apartments in fifty feet, whereas if you were using traditional construction, you'd be hard pressed to, to achieve that.
How high are the ceilings in the units?
Uh, so in the units that we're proposing, they're, they're ten feet, yeah, as, as a minimum. And then obviously, once you get to the, the upper floor, you have a bit more variety, um, with the expressed gable roof. Um, so, so these are just some renderings, uh, looking, uh, from the south towards, uh, the southeast corner of the site with Susan Lawrence, uh, to your left.
And this is to scale?
This is all accurate, yes, yeah, this is all accurate. Yep, next slide. Uh, this is kind of in the middle of the project, looking south. And so this is looking towards that, uh, kind of activated commercial, uh, zone. So you might have a diner, you might have retail spaces. Um, but you're seeing that fairly large public courtyard that's created facing onto North Greeley. That is, um, at, at the maximum, I think it's about thirty feet deep. Uh, so it does really create a, a, a quite generous public space, um, uh, that is, again, fully accessible. Uh, next slide. Uh, and then a view of the, uh, residence courtyard looking out toward the east, towards, towards King. So not only are we providing, um, three accessible, uh, courtyards for the residents, every unit has access to their own private outdoor space, whether it's a, a projecting balcony or an inset balcony. Uh, so you do have a fairly ample access to outdoor space, kind of relative to what we would see typically in the market.
And this would be the second floor?
Exactly, yeah, yeah, so you're fifteen feet above the sidewalk at this point. Yep, and next slide, yeah, and then, uh, yeah, just a, it's an overall view of the building in context to scale. Um, uh, and you, what you can see here a bit more clearly is, we're also proposing to put green roofs on the gables. Uh, so the view as you, as you ascend the hill to the east, looking out over this project, um, it really does begin to disappear into the forest beyond, um, really cutting down on any visual impact that might be perceived.
I'm just curious, what, what do you plant on the roofs?
Yeah, there, so there's a wide variety of, of, uh, extensive and intensive plants that you can use. So on a, on the, on the flat courtyard, we might go with something that's a bit more, uh, soil intensive. So you, you could support shrubs and trees, um, on something like a sloping roof, even more like a sedum. And so it's a fairly thin, uh, soil coverage and a fairly thin plant. So it doesn't require as much maintenance, doesn't require much pruning, but it'd all be native vegetation.
And people that will be, that will be taken care of, people are gonna water it and?
Very minimal maintenance, yeah, we've, we've done green roofs all over the northeast. And after they're planted, um, yeah, you don't have a guy with a lawnmower on the roof.
Well, no, not a lawnmower, but I mean, does, does it die, does it turn brown, does it?
Yeah, it'll, it'll turn brown, I mean, it's, it's, it, uh, we wouldn't necessarily propose, uh, watering the roof. Um, it's kind of misaligned to the principles of the project, but, um, you know, it would uh, not require much maintenance and it wouldn't require replanting, yeah. Uh, next slide. And then just some views of the building in context, so again, looking south, looking over the, uh, sea of parking, uh, you can see the building, uh, and next slide. Again, just a little bit closer, uh, so, you know, we think that the scale of this, um, relative to what the existing urban context is, is appropriate, you know, matching the, kind of the rhythm of the existing buildings that, that line nor- uh, North Greeley. Next slide. And then looking, uh, from the north down towards the train station. Um, this creating a, an edge condition, uh, as you kind of make the turn down North Greeley into the hamlet, uh, really creating a, a threshold, um, into the town where currently, you know, the back of right, it doesn't quite, doesn't quite pull that off. Next slide. Lots of zoning data, which I'm happy to dive into, but, uh, has been submitted, uh, that the planning staff has reviewed. I don't know if this is, I think the only thing worth noting is that, uh, if you look in the lower left, uh, one of the, the metrics that we're measuring, uh, is the current impervious ratio of the site, which is almost ninety percent impervious between the existing building and all of the asphalt. And we would be reducing that to at, at minimum sixty-five percent. Um, and potentially even further depending on the ability for the green roofs to meet D E C guidelines. Yeah, and then, so then I just have a lot of reference pages from our application that are more technical drawings. I don't need to cycle through these, but they're up here as reference in case we need to get back to any of them. I'll turn it over.
Hi, thanks for, uh, hearing our application. My name is Philip Carmel. I'm a land use and environmental lawyer, I practice at the law firm Brian Cave Leighton Peisner. And I'm here to try to give you an overview of the zoning text that we're proposing. The point of the zoning text would be to permit the development that you've just seen, but also to give the town the regulatory tools to make sure that the town gets what we're promising. So, uh, you know, you can't put a photograph of a building in the zoning code. You have to put standards that will then, uh, be standards that the developer will have to live up to in order to get a building permit. The technique that we've used, that we're proposing to the board, is a special permit. Uh, so we're still gonna need site plan approval from the planning board. But a special permit would be, uh, there would be standards for issuance of the special permit. And the, the, we would have to meet those standards, obviously, to get the special permit and proceed with, uh, the development. Um, so I wanna give you an overview of the special permit standards. I'm not gonna go through every single one, I'm gonna try to pick out, uh, what I view as the key things. And there's also a couple of policy issues that I think the town board really has to think about. And I'm, I'm gonna try to identify those. Uh, so the first is, what area of the town is eligible for the special permit? Uh, let me assure you, we're not rezoning the entire town. Uh, we're targeting a very, uh, targeted area that would be, uh, even potentially eligible, eligible for this type of special permit. It's the North Greeley corridor, it's the, only the area west of North Greeley Avenue and east of the railroad tracks. So it's a relatively, um, small area in close proximity to the train station. And only sites that are thirty-three thousand square feet or more would be eligible. So this is gonna have a very, very limited impact. Uh, and it's really focused on, uh, trying to come up with a good structure for, for this project. Uh, and, and the immediate area. Uh, dwelling unit type, that's gonna be one of the standards, uh, in the special permit. It's gonna be studios, first floor, uh, excuse me, one bedroom apartments and two bedroom apartments. So there'll be no three bedroom apartments or larger. And, uh, obviously, uh, the town of Newcastle is very proud of its amazingly good public schools. We don't wanna have an adverse impact on the public schools. And we don't think this is gonna be a very, um, uh, child, uh, you know, family oriented, uh, type development. Sure, there will be some people, I'm sure, with, uh, schoolchildren. But I think the target market is people who live in the town, who wanna downsize. Maybe their kids, like my kids, uh, have left the house. Uh, and, uh, you know, they're sitting there with a fairly substantial single-family home that may be more than what they need and they'd like to downsize. Or much younger people who are just kind of starting out, uh, and are not ready for the whole, um, shebang of, of a single-family home, you know, in, in the town of Newcastle. So i- it's, it's targeted and there's performance standards for the dwelling unit size. Uh, affordable housing, Jeff touched on that, we're gonna have to meet your affordable housing requirements, and we will do that. Uh, and we've also, uh, this is not in the zoning, uh, code, but we will also be proposing as part of the project that we even exceed those requirements, and, and Jeff mentioned that. Bicycle parking, there'll be at least one parking space, uh, bicycle parking space for every dwelling unit. And there's standards for the spaces, it's not just gonna be like a rack in front of the building. There's specific performance standards, uh, for the bicycle parking, cuz it, as part of the green, um, theme of what we're proposing. The permitted uses were, uh, ground floor uses, uh, a, a, one or more commercial ground floor uses are required. And that's actually a policy issue for the board to think about. Uh, and I'm gonna, uh, address that when I get to the parking. Because commercial uses do have a parking demand, and I'm gonna be discussing that in the context of parking. But, uh, the idea is, uh, to be responsive to what we perceive to be requests for some non-residential use in the building. So we've included some commercial, uh, use on the ground floor. So let's talk about parking, cuz that is, that's a big issue. Uh, and not only in the town of Newcastle, in basically everywhere in Westchester. So, uh, what we are proposing, as Jeff mentioned, is one parking space for each apartment. Uh, and we think we can very, um, strongly substantiate that that is sufficient for the residential units. Uh, be, given the location of this building, very close to the train station, and near also, uh, bus, I think two bus lines that go through downtown Chappaqua. But the main thing is the train station, uh, very obviously easy walking distance to the train station. And the shared, um, car, uh, you know, rental strategy that Jeff discussed. We think, and we have a lot of data about the efficacy of the shared car approach. And we think we will satisfy the town, that we are including sufficient parking in the building for the forty-five dwelling units. We in fact have forty-nine spaces, not, not forty-five, so we have four extra spaces. And that's really designed to accommodate perhaps the, some of the employees who work in the commercial space. Um, so that leaves a shortfall, uh, under the town zoning code. Because the town has specific parking requirements for restaurants and for retail establishments. We're not gonna be able to accommodate those parking, that parking demand onsite. So we're gonna have to satisfy the town that there's adequate parking in the area. So, uh, we've discussed this with the town planner, who's given us a lot of constructive, uh, advice on this. We're gonna have to present a parking study that demonstrates that there's sufficient parking in the immediate area, we're not talking about a, a long way away, of, of sufficient parking in the immediate area to accommodate the parking demand from the commercial use. There is a parking lot across the street that has more than twenty spaces in it. It's often, uh, severely underutilized. Um, that's what I've been told, but we're gonna have a study, so we're not gonna base this.
At night, but if you ever try to park there during the day, there's, it's difficult to find a spot.
Okay, with the local knowledge, it's very important. We're gonna have someone out there with counters and, uh, not just at night, but during the day and at night. And we're gonna collect actual data, so that we're all working from, uh, you know, a professionally assembled database. Uh, and there's also on-street parking, of course, we have a massive, uh, parking lot by the train station, um, uh, also. So we're gonna have to present a parking study of the town, and we're gonna have to satisfy the town that the, the, uh, parking availability matches the size of the commercial space. And this is a policy issue for the town, because ultimately, if the town wants less commercial space, which would have less parking demand, that's something we can accommodate. Uh, so we're gonna have to work this out in the course of the application. But there are standards in the special permit for parking, and it can either be met onsite or. And it can either be met onsite or offsite. And there's going to be certain specific criteria. At the end of the day. The town board is not going to issue the special permit if if you're not satisfied with the parking. So we're going to have to balance out the parking demand in the and the the available spaces. We will not be able to meet all of the commercial parking demand onsite. That's completely inconsistent with the design that we've come up with. So. If the town's not comfortable with that, we're going to have to reduce the amount of commercial space. So this is something we're going to have to work out. We owe the town planner a parking study that has been requested. We are going to do that and that we're going to have to examine that and. We're very reasonable in our view. We're going to have to look for guidance from the town and his professional staff as to how it wants us to manage the parking situation. But at the end of the day, we think there will be sufficient parking between the onsite and the offsite. To accommodate certainly all the residential demand and the commercial demand. And we, that's it, that's one of the standards in the special permit.
So Phil, I know there was a discussion a while back or thought that perhaps building even a deck at the lot right across the street. Where is that or is that still something that's on the table? Because I think that would add what, like another twenty-five spots or something?
Right, that property is not under the control of the applicant.
It's under the control of town.
Oh, that's a town.
It's a town-owned lot. Yes, it's a town-owned lot.
We'll look, we'll look into it. I don't want to, I don't want to suggest that that's impossible, but I also don't want to.
No, I'm saying it's something that's could be considered.
We will look into it, but obviously.
It only adds eighteen parking spots.
There would be a substantial cost to that and it's. The entire philosophy of this development is to minimize the environmental impact. And we're not just philosophically interested in building a whole parking structure. So at the same time, we need to satisfy the town about the parking. So we will consider that in the parking study. It may, even if it's feasible physically, it may not be either economically feasible or simply consistent with. The developers' green philosophy that underlines, underlies the development proposal to the town. The other, some of the other requirements of the special permit is that at least fifty percent of the onsite parking spaces. Have to have charging facilities for electric vehicles. I think if you read the tea leaves. Some point soon, we're all going to have electric cars. So you know, we're we're going to have to accommodate that in the development. And then really a centerpiece of the special permit standard is green building construction. There's very specific technical standards here to achieve a net zero carbon building. I will not attempt to explain them to you in detail. If you're interested in that, we have the architect who is very capable of explaining that. But the point is, just from a policy standpoint, this is not just going to be like a lead certified building. The special permit requires very stringent green standards. And we're going to have to demonstrate through engineering satisfactory to the town and the building inspector. That we are meeting these green standards to get our building permit. So that's part of the special permit criteria. There are open space standards as well that are consistent with what you saw in those renderings. There are bulk restrictions in in terms of maximum height and setbacks and that type of thing. So this idea of avoiding a street wall where we just go up to the height of the building without any setbacks. That's just not our proposal. That's going to actually be required. In other words, there's a specific special permit provision that requires those type of setbacks above the street level. So that that's part of what we've prepared as well. And then there's a somewhat interesting application procedure. And the town attorney had a lot of input into that. And if it's okay, I'm going to suggest that perhaps he explained the the procedural aspects. If that's okay.
I'd be happy to. So an earlier version of legislation contemplated a preliminary concept plan being put forward that would be reviewed. And a lot of what we've heard over the last couple of years with respect to processing land use applications. Is the desire to try to streamline the process. So what we've, we've moved away in the draft legislation from the idea that there'd be a concept plan floated initially and reviewed and tweaked. And there'd be reviews by the planning board and now there'd be concurrent joint site plan review. By the town board and the planning boards. You'd have a joint public hearing. And at that, on that, at that one hearing, you'd have the applicant presenting on all of the site development standards that Phil described. And the town board would really have the lion's share of the approval authority with respect to those standards. And the planning board would be sitting, members would be sitting right alongside you would retain its site plan approval authority. For all of the aspects of the development not covered in the special permit criteria. So that's what we're proposing and that's what we've come up with collaboratively with the applicant Sabrina in terms of process.
That does seem like it would expedite it if there are joint meetings rather than having holding two separate ones.
It it makes a lot of sense and I don't think we would lose anything by by doing that in terms of review and, you know, due consideration.
And we could have joint work sessions with them as well.
Okay, so that's the end of our series of presentations for the town board. Of course, we're happy to take any questions. And if there's no questions tonight, we're happy to, you know, continue the dialogue with your professional staff. We will be back hopefully soon with all of the specific requirements in this code. Proposed text provision for a complete application. And at the next time we're back, we will be kind of requesting that the town board formally refer this to the planning board. And issue, you know, a lead agency determination that it would like to serve as lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And send that out to the other involved agencies. We're not asking for that this evening, but we will be asking for that, I think, next time we return, which I I hope to be very soon.
So we, excuse me, we don't have a meeting next week. We do have a meeting the following week on the twenty-second.
Okay, we will try to make that date. We want to make sure we get the parking study in and the other information that the town planner has requested. And which is in the the draft legislation. I think we can make that date and we'll certainly try to do that because we, the applicant is. Very enthusiastic about his project and we really want to get get the approval process going. Even when we start, we're we're not done. That's just the start. So then there's a lot of, you know, there's public hearing, there's, there's going to be questions. We're going to have to answer questions and there's been a lot of outreach to the community. So I think we're starting from a good place. But we we do want to get started with the formal review process. So we're going to, we'll try to make that that next hearing date.
Could you describe the outreach?
Okay.
Could you describe the outreach to the community? I know you told us a little bit about it, but that was some time ago, so.
Yeah.
And I know you did. I appreciate meet with the residents of one forty-nine King Street and I know that went well.
Right, I I'm going to ask Jeff.
We've met twice. We we went out to the neighbors of one forty-nine King Street. We went out to the neighbors next door to us. Telebachi owns the building next door, all the neighbors across the street from us. We've presented, this is our fourth presentation in this room so far, so.
This is for really the benefit of people who are listening or wondering.
Yeah, this is the fourth time we've presented so far. We were here in June and then two additional times to the neighbors on Greeley as well as one forty-nine King Street. As well as also just talking to people that we know in town that live in the neighborhood and what do they want to see?
So I think what Nikki's asking a bit is is not just that, but how are we going to? You know, one of the things that is very important to us on the board is that we have a lot of resident output and and a lot of resident input. I'm sorry, and outreach. It's been a long day. So we do want to make sure that we hold special meeting, which we would with a public hearing, obviously. But that residents have time to comment, understand the project, ask questions, touch the, touch the wood over there. And do whatever, you know, and any other materials you may have. And really be able to be part of the process and and give us that input.
And after, once we go forward, we have to do public hearings, we will. I I don't think, and I'm going to say this bluntly, we're not going to, we're not prepared to do another public meeting. Prior to submitting again. I mean, we we've done this, we've opened this up, we've presented, this is all on the town website. I've gotten probably twenty phone calls from people that know me saying, hey, you're involved in this project from seeing it online. When we go and present at the public hearing, we're talking about doing a model for people to see. So hopefully not touch, hopefully not touch and play with it because it's not built. But we will bring materials for everybody to do. But through the whole process of the approvals, we will be presenting to the public again. As we've said from day one, we're inclusive developers. The first thing we do is come into a town and ask what do you want? And that's how we got to sixty-six hundred square feet of retail in this small building is by people saying we want ground floor retail. We want a diner, we want a family restaurant. And that's how we got to where we are, which in some ways is biting us with parking. But that's why we are here is because we're going with open arms and our feet forward, so.
Speaking of parking, just to be clear, have you given up on the idea of the parking structure? Because I had heard, I don't know if this is true, but that the residents were quite happy with the idea of a park at grade level from the King Street side.
So it adds eighteen parking spots and it's the absolute opposite of building net carbon zero to build a steel structured parking. So it only adds eighteen additional parking spots, the cost to build it. We did a preliminary study. We can further study it, but it's not practical for what it is to do.
Me personally don't like parking structures, but if it it sounded like it could be something attractive and adding park, a park area for people, so that's why I was interested.
Problem we ran into by the time you start building ramps and building emergency staircases. You're not building as much parking on the size of the site to add to it. You were adding eighteen parking spots to the twenty-six there. You're not gaining all that much to add two stories of deck. Because you're adding deck steel and then a last deck for, to have something on top of it. You're just adding steel upon steel upon steel, not very environmentally friendly and it started to get into.
Can't build a mass timber parking structure?
You can, and they have. But again. But no, yeah, I'll just, yeah, so I'll just, I'll just clarify. So so the the site, at least the one that's been identified to us that the city owns is geometrically not particularly conducive to structured parking. It's quite small and the ramps that you need for two-way access as well as the minimum kind of grade of those ramps. As well as, as Jeff said, egress, emergency egress for for people, elevators for accessibility. Not only does it not particularly. Impressive in terms of the number of spaces it gives, but it, in doing just to meet the the basic parking standards, you're pushing the volume of that structure all the way to the sidewalk. So now we're talking about something that's that's directly butting the sidewalk. It's two stories tall, it's filled with cars, there's no retail screening, there's no, there's nothing at grade. That I that I think we would characterize as a as a net benefit to the community. There might be an opportunity, you know, twenty feet in the air for a green space for the residents of the hill. But but for the residents in town, it didn't seem like a particularly advantageous strategy. Happy to share that study with you.
It didn't, it didn't work out. It was in concept, it looked like a good idea, but when starting to look at it, you you were just building ramps and stairways and elevators and we weren't gaining much.
Yeah, no, doesn't sound good.
Yeah.
Okay. And what were your thoughts? I I know you mentioned a diner, but what were your thoughts about the other types of commercial establishments that would be in there?
We haven't. When we came up with putting retail to ground floor, it was retail to draw people down. It could be a small cafe, it could be a small grocery to complement the building. Come downstairs, you have things on there, we want to activate the street.
There's a small grocery right across the street, so.
Susan Lawrence?
No, no, on the other, there's a village market.
Across behind Starbucks?
On that, yes.
So. Something of that nature, really the market will tell, right? When we, when you go through the approval process and we actually have a project that's going to come to market in the timeframe. We go to the market to see what's there. The issue we're coming to play is with the amount of retail that's in the base of the building and the parking acquired for it. It it it's butting heads against each other and it doesn't make sense to have sixty-six hundred square feet of retail. Three thousand square feet of retail, we can put in small retailers to complement the building and draw people down to the site. And not have that much retail and satisfy what's needed conceptually. Cafe, diner, all of that and not have that much retail, adds more parking, probably solve a lot of the conversations we're having. And not put so much in. We were trying to meet the goals of the community at the same time. But we can probably solve it easier. Sixty-six hundred square feet for forty-five apartments, size-wise isn't. But we'll, we'll work through it. I mean, that's why we're here and that's why we're talking.
I guess we need a better balance.
We're trying to satisfy everybody, you know, diner.
And that's a giant diner.
No, it wouldn't all be the diner, but that would be giving you a diner and allow for other retailers in the space as well.
So we'll, we'll look at that. I mean, I I I think we could consider cutting that down a little bit and adding parking underneath the structure as well.
We're, we're happy to do it. Retail is retail, it's an ever-changing game.
But I guess we'll go one step at a time. You'll do the parking study and that will tell us, give us more information.
But the parking study ties to what retail you have. If sixty-six hundred of retail, your parking study says one thing, so we essentially will be doing.
So how will you handle that in the study?
So we're going to talk about it internally and think about what we're going to do.
Yeah, I would suggest doing options and if we have it at the sixty-seven hundred square feet, this is it. But if we, if we, you know, made it smaller, we could accommodate here. I would have a few options. I I mean, I've been up here on this dais for close to ten years and I will tell you that. Every, I hear often that people really would like that diner.
I've heard it.
Yeah, so I I would say if you're going to eliminate any retail, it wouldn't be a diner. It wouldn't be eliminating.
So whatever the retail is, it's retail. Whether we can get a diner to come in, a food operator that operates has got. Trust me, I think it's great because it complements the building upstairs, it complements, it draws traffic down the street. It's an amenity. So our goal would be to bring anything that's going to activate and amenitize the building in the town is our goal. We want this to work for the town and for the residents that are going to live there. Go downstairs and you have that downstairs, it's fantastic. We love retail that complements upstairs.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Any, Ally or Chris, do you have any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm in bed with a sick four-year-old. I don't love the idea of a multi-story parking structure in town anyway. I know, Vicki, you said the same thing. And I guess our options now would be, you know, just to cut the retail space. But if we did that, and I know we still need to do some more parking studies. But if we cut some of the retail space, how much more additional parking would you anticipate getting if that was the option?
We could also just cut the parking requirement also. It's up to you guys, not me. It's your code.
Answer that question.
I I don't, we have to study it. We we have to look at it because the way, I mean, we can throw it back up on the screen, the way it all goes. And Andrew will tell me, I asked him this the other day and he goes, really? He, the way it all.
Depends how much you're cutting.
Cutting, where are we cutting it from? It's this game of Tetris. So he, he got upset with me because I think I did this last night. I don't know, we'll figure it out quickly and what we can do. But it also comes into how much parking there is offsite that we can use. And I wouldn't, and I can say this to you, a diner, a restaurant's business is not going to be done at lunchtime in this town. The majority of it is going to be done at night. A lot of it will be done takeout, delivery. I just actually was sitting here while Phil was talking redesigning the square footage from front house, back house. Square footage from front house, back house, and actually a whole delivery bike area, um because, you know, we forget the times have changed also. So you need to accommodate for that.
I will say though, I I would beg to differ, because we don't have that many restaurants in town that are actually open for lunch. Um sit-down restaurants, so I think that it actually would get a decent amount of traffic at lunchtime.
Be happy to be proven wrong.
Well, we had a diner in town years ago, and that diner was.
Sales pitch to the diner operator.
Diner was busy at lunch and on the weekends, it was.
Oh, weekends for sure, weekends, no question, but if it's the weekends, I'm willing to bet there's a huge parking lot next to the train station, it's pretty empty on weekends that they can use.
I think it's a a great project, I think it's really exciting that there would potentially be, you know, a net zero building here. Um but it sounds like we definitely need a parking study and a bit more information, I appreciate everyone's time, thank you.
Thank you, feel better.
Chris, anything from you?
Uh no, thank you. This is our presidency, we've got work to do, obviously, on our side, and I think um. Us being creative on the parking is gonna be key, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm not there in person.
Feel better.
I think we can't really anticipate, you know, commuting has changed after covid, I don't know. If it's gonna go back to the way it was, or if it never will go back, um I think. We're gonna have to sort of try to figure that out a little bit, um but I do urge you, as you're doing your parking study, to look at if. Figure that we do wanna keep a diner, right, so if I I would look at. Cutting it a little bit, cutting it a lot, and while still keeping that diner there, and seeing how that impacts parking and and. Your Tetris game and how much you can additionally you could put in there while still maintaining appropriately sized space.
We will, we'll look at all different scenarios, we we wanna make the town happy, the residents happy, and we want this project to be successful.
Alright, and then I agree, as you've been kinda describing what that raised parking garage would look like, I I don't think it would be.
I printed it and left it on my printer in the office, it's, doesn't work.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, may I speak for Safer?
Yeah, of course.
Well, I just wanna, I I wanna thank everybody uh for, you know, hearing us out tonight, but I also wanna thank really particularly my. The team of people who have done such a great job, all the professionals that I've been able to uh enlist in this aid, you know, the only. Long time ago, Sabrina will know, I I was we put on a recording for the town, having to do with change and what we as the people own this property. How we saw our participation in making that change positive. And I have to tell you that, while it's important to speak uh to each of these details that you're discussing. I really don't wanna lose the vision that is motivating me and my family to wanna develop this property at all. Uh I think you've heard me say this before, we're really not interested in building an apartment building, we're interested in building a green building that will challenge the way people build. And also invite people to live in a different way, and one of the ironies to me, when I hear people talk about parking is. That it's not just a place where you put your car, you have to drive there, and when you drive there, you have to combust fuel. And when you combust fuel, that is what we're talking about, when we're talking about green and climate change, so for a transit-oriented development. To on the one hand, be uh trying to take full advantage of one of the great resources of Chapel Hill, which is fantastic. Uh um both access to the train, but the train's access to New York, so on the one hand, take advantage of that, on the other hand. Wanna then privilege cars to a great extent, cause that's sort of what we're doing. I just don't want us to lose sight of what our goal here is, and our goal here is to do something that isn't being done now, hasn't been done for. You know, basically since oil was discovered in, you know, Wellsville, New York, a hundred and twenty years ago, and that we're all trying to get to a new place. And I think that, I just wanna thank the guy, everybody who came, Phil and Nanette and Andrew and of course Jeff, because I've been the one who's been saying. You know, I don't know how to do this, I just know what I'm trying to accomplish uh at the end, and they're really, it's really their. Uh skill and their expertise that's gotten us this far, so thank you guys.
And and Don, I think your your passion for this project. And wanting to build a building like this and really leave a legacy for your family is part of what makes this so attractive.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I just wanna add to that, Don, I really, and I think so many people appreciate your community-minded focus and. Also your focus on the environment, so i- i- it's really very much appreciated and very exciting.
Thank you, I'm excited too, I hope you are excited.
We can feel that, we can, yes, we definitely see that.
Um Sabrina, was there anything that you wanted to add?
No, I, no, I, you know, listen, I I think that this project, um you know, the devil is in the details with this project, and I think that. The intentions are all there, you know, as a climate-smart community, it is a perfect marriage for what we have all been working in regards to. You know, protection of the climate, it's just a matter of can we get from A to B, and you know, the the applicant's team has been diligently working. Um very accommodating to what we've been asking for, so we can get it through the process.
Alright, thank you, you know, I think it will be interesting as a community and and kind of taking what Don said to heart, to think about. How architecture's progressing and how our environment and our whole society is progressing, and if we can kind of take the leap. To get to that next step to say, you know what, that that is kind of the wave of the future, and are we ready to be? The first municipality in Westchester that really can adopt, can build something like this and and look toward that future, so it's it's very interesting.
Take the leap with us.
I I just wanna add, I just wanna add something, um when we came, a lot of us came to the town board, Lisa, you've been on for quite some time. Uh but when Chris and I and Tara and all people who are fairly new to this, um I think that. When we talked about development, this was exactly what we had in mind, um development that was sustainable and made sense for our community. And that would be the result of um negotiated outcomes, you know, a true back and forth between developer and his team. And the town board and the community, so I I just wanna, I just wanna be clear that this was exactly the kind of project and the kind of. Interaction and give and take that we felt was really important to this community, so I wanna thank you for listening to our residents, understanding. What they want and having that at the forefront of your your minds as you as you develop this plan, so. Um thank you very much, really appreciate it.
And I appreciate also you're willing to go to the twelve percent affordability, it's very important to us.
We're here to work together.
Alright, so what are next steps?
Next steps are the referrals that um that Phil mentioned to sort of let the horse out of the gate, if you will, and start the secret process and other processes. Town, Sabrina in my office had flagged the parking issue, not so much on the residential, because um you know, that that. To us was a more solvable uh challenge, but on the on the retail, because as you've heard, there is this uh trade-off. The more retail you um have, the more parking you need. Uh and particularly with restaurants, there are, uh at least under the current town code, um considered very intensive parking users. But what I'm hearing tonight from the town board is um a a receptiveness to um possibly having some reduction. Um or uh open to um a a smaller retail footprint to lessen the parking demand. And that would be something that the parking study would explore, so although it uh. It to to us was a somewhat of a threshold issue and outcome-determined issue in terms of what you were actually gonna get on the ground floor. Uh my sense is that the board, you know, wants to take the next step and look at a parking study, look at alternatives. Um and if that's the case, uh we could have resolutions on your agenda in two weeks, and then on the twenty-second on Tuesday. Uh to 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 take that step.
So I think that's a good course forward, as long as we can get a parking study with a a little bit of time for us to review that and discuss it as well. Um and then, that's not gonna be a very long meeting on the twenty-second, because it's. Coming home right before Thanksgiving, but it is something I think we should definitely look at, and you know, for residents at home as well. What's great about this is the planning board is still gonna be involved, residents are still gonna be involved, so it's something that we're gonna work through together, and I. I love the idea of having a joint meeting to try to expedite the process, I think that's something we should do going forward for for any development. It seems very easy, and and because this way, we can actually with the planning board be discussing issues instead of. They're writing a memo and then we having to meet with them, and it's it's kind of great to be able to do it together, that was a good idea.
Would the board want uh the town town staff to have the opportunity to review and um. Prepare a memo on the parking study before you uh have this back on your agenda, or? Is that something that the board feels comfortable looking at after the referrals go out?
Um is there a a reason we couldn't? Modify it after it, after the referral is made, I mean, because we would still, as the town board as lead agency, which would be our intention. Um we would be the ones opining on parking.
Right, it was just a question of sequence and whether um you wanted to see the study first and have a comfort level with it before um.
I mean, I'd like to see the study first, but I I think you'd be able to get it to my sense of what you're saying, right, Phil?
Yes, well, we'll get you the study, uh and uh, well, well, we'll work together to satisfy the issue.
I mean, Ed, what, are you asking whether uh we wanna give you enough time to review the study and give us? A memo summarizing your thoughts and the town's, the staff's thoughts about it?
It would be a memo from Sabrina.
Okay.
Digesting this the study and and reporting back to the town board.
Effective way of handling.
If I may, if I may, I think it's important that once uh the applicant provides their parking analysis, that I can give you a comparison. Right, of of what the code requires today, what um other analyses we've had. We have had prepared for us say in regards to parking, so that you have a better foundation and understanding of where this is coming in. Relative to what we've been living with in our code, as well as other uh parking ratios and considerations we've learned.
Yeah. Oh, well, also, we could possibly do it in a meeting, you know, rather than wait.
Well, and when you give us your parking study, perhaps you could have a chart also as to what our current requirements are, what your proposals are, and then option one, two, three. And and how that changes as well.
Yes, we'll do that, I let me, let me just make a basic point, which is that to. You don't have to finish all decision-making to start the process, so for you to refer the project proposal. Uh to the town planning board and start the secret process. You don't need to know exactly what the finished product is, I mean, we have a proposal, what what, you don't wanna have a vague. Proposal where no one really understands what's going on, but that's not the case here at all, we have a very specific proposal, there's. Uh the the parking issue will need to be addressed, we're gonna get you the parking study, there's gonna be professional analysis from your town planner as to. Uh whether we did a good parking study and what it really shows, what the data uh establishes. And that's all fine, but we don't have to nail down every detail before we get started, there's gonna be a whole process, there's gonna be public hearings, the uh. If after hearing from the community or considering the matter further and talking to your professional staff. You decide uh you would prefer adjustments in some aspect of what we've proposed, that's fine, uh we're we're we're, that's not um. That's part of the process, so let's not delay starting the process to to nail down every detail, but we will definitely get you a parking study. Cause that has been specifically requested uh in order to have a complete application, and we're gonna get you that study, but um. Uh there'll be further dialogue, I'm sure, even after we get you the stuff.
Okay.
And I would agree that we don't need to nail down all of the issues before we start the process, um I I think there just needs to be some comfort. That when the parking study comes in and there's um an option A, B, and C, and maybe it's sixty six hundred square feet. And a little less, and a little less, there'll be an option in there that works for the town board, as opposed to, wait a minute, none of those options work. We've gotta come up with an option D, E, and F, I don't think that is where we're heading, so if the board is comfortable with that, and I I I think we could be ready to proceed on the twenty-second.
Okay. Alright, so I would say, prepare the resolutions. As we wait for the parking study, and then let's, we'll circle back and and look at those on the twenty-second.
Thank you.
Okay, uh anyone else have any questions on the Zoom or comments? Alright, um so great, thank you for.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, everybody, have a great night.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Sorry, sorry, I wasn't there in person, take care.
Bye, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Alright, next, on to a draft local law on a uniform building code.
Do we have Tom?
Yes, Tom's right there.
Excellent, so uh this is a amendment to chapter forty-eight of the town code, which deals with building. Uh permits, um enforcement issues, COs, um all of the things that are Tom's sort of um day-to-day. Things that he must do, um the Department of State is a state agency that is charged with promulgating. Uh the regulations that govern uh news issues, building enforcement, uh building applications, issuance of COs. They, they adopted new regulations, um and all municipalities uh in New York uh are required to uh adopt them, their their minimum requirements. So our uh exercise was going through chapter forty-eight and uh comparing its requirements to those that are in this new regulation. And making sure that they aligned, so the 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 local.
Sounds exciting.
The local law, that, and they didn't make it easy, by the way, because there wasn't a um. A red line to the old regulations, and it was really a, but we've done that work. And we've identified the um the new content that needs to be added to chapter forty-eight and the changes that have to be made, and there's. A red line uh that I'll walk the board through, um again.
Before we get there, though, just a quick question, is there, are there any changes in here that you're proposing that are not required to be made?
Um I can think of two, um and the first one is on the first page.
Okay, yeah, when you get to those, just point those out.
Uh on the first page, um we are adding the word manufactured in front of playground equipment, so again. These are, uh so I'm now looking at forty-eight, twelve, B, and and these are exceptions to um the requirement that one gets a building permit. Again, these come directly from the state, we are adding the word manufacturer, um that is, I think, one of the. One of only two uh examples of where we've freelanced, and that's just for clarification, based on uh past experience.
Well, I think that's really important.
Uh the other changes I'm gonna go through next, uh. Uh in that same section, this language comes directly from the state, uh. You'll see in, like, say, uh section ten, we're um just adding some additional content there for the state's regulation. As we turn the page, um. Section E, these are all of the things that uh must be part of a building permit application. So the state's added a few things, uh and you'll see that new content, again, all of this uh is coming directly from the state regulation.
Do they allow, I'm just out of, I'm just curious, Tom, just in light of being environmentally conscious, do they allow now digital um? Sets of drawings or construction drawings, or do you still need like big hard copy stamped drawings?
We are still using hard copy stamped, we don't have the platform to accept digital media.
Okay, what would, would that be difficult or and or incredibly expensive to do that?
We are entertaining new proposals for such that, but we have not decided on a system that's adaptable. To the existing municipality that we have now in our offices, but we are looking into that.
Got it, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
So this additional content for applications appears in E five. So this additional content for applications appears in E five, then you turn the page again in E six. And then. The next changes appear on page six of the red line. We're still in the same section. It's. Forty eight dash twelve, but now we're in subparts I and K. We're just adding the word site plan. In those two provisions. If you turn the page, you have seven of the red line, section forty eight thirteen. There's new content under construction inspections. One of the things that you'll see in this section at the top of page eight is a provision for remote inspections. Speak to this better than I can, but inspections continued during COVID, but logistically. Access to properties became a bit more challenging and building inspectors and Tom, maybe you've got some anecdotes, but. Remote inspections, whether it be FaceTime or photographs, when it was appropriate or. Something that had a necessity. Buildings inspectors had to had to turn to. Well, now we've got the state. Codifying procedures for that. Tom, do you want to add anything?
Just I'd like to say that it was a very effective tool, being able to take videos and pictures and FaceTime walking through structures. To allow the building inspectors to get out into the field without being in people's homes. It was something that filled a void and in some cases is very useful because not every. Inspection has to be in depth. Sometimes we're just getting follow up documentation to an inspection. And a simple photo or a video will answer the question and allow us to better manage our time.
Great, thanks.
The next change, if you turn to page nine of the red line forty eight fourteen. Now, this is the only other example of something that is the opportunity to actually change. It's not coming from the state and it's not a substantive change. This is the provision that defines how long a residential building permit is good for and how long a commercial permit is good for. The language in this section of the code was always a little clunky. If you read it, it started off by saying that a building permit for something other than. A single family residence and that just wasn't a very, a bit of a clumsy way of explaining that it's. One year for residential, one year for commercial. So we've just reordered the sentences to clean that up. The next. Provisions.
So I I'm sorry, one second. Just given. The supply chain issues that we've had post pandemic. If something is not completed within a period of twelve months. From the date of the permit. Is it easy to extend it? Do they need to pay a whole other fee? How does that work?
Ed, if I may, we we have fees to do building permit extensions and they're for a six month term. So yes, there is a provision. If you cannot finish, you can get a renewal. To go for another six months and then repeat that as deemed necessary.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so some additional new content in forty eight seventeen. You turn to page ten of the red line, there's some content with respect to certificates of occupancy. And temporary certificates of occupancy there. And then forty eight nineteen, there's substantial new content with respect to. Uses that are subject to operating permits. And here. You'll see some uses that might seem a little bit foreign, like sugar houses and explosives and fireworks. But the idea here was that even though those are uses that. We may not see in town, it would be preferable to have this content in the code because if it's not. Then these users would be exempt from operating permits and the inspections that go along with them. So we err on the side of inclusion. You've got in section D of this part, you've got the provision again for remote inspections of. These for these operating permits.
Just going back to what you just said for one second because I don't want, I don't want anybody to be concerned. This is the building code. So these are saying, for instance, for combustible combustible storage, that they would need an operating permit. But then that also has to go along with our zoning that doesn't allow necessarily that type of use, correct? Okay.
Turning a few more pages, there's some changes with respect to operating permits. That's on page fourteen, section F. And in the next section, forty eight twenty, the state has added a number of uses. That are required to have fire safety and property maintenance inspections and those are in subsection two. You'll see schools, colleges, et cetera there. Again, reading down, you've got the option for remote inspections where they're appropriate. The next change I'll flag is a new section forty eight twenty six. This is. An entirely new section that has requirements for inspections of parking garages. And Tom, if you want to jump in, you know, please do at any point. Again, this is language from the state. And, you know, we may never need it, but it's it's here in the code if we do.
Ed, if I may, the only thing I would want clarification on, when you were talking about term limits of building permits, I thought the commercial was going to be two years as it currently is. In the town.
It is, it hasn't changed. If I.
Okay.
Apologize if I misspoke, but two years for for commercial. And it was just, again, we we changed the order of two sentences so we didn't start it all with a negative.
Thank you. I I might add also that the town is very much already doing these. Operating permits and these fire safety inspections. So what the state is asking is really secondary to what we already do. You know, we we're on top of these inspections and have been for quite a while. So they're not asking more of us. It's more. Just a follow up that we are doing them.
The parking garage section is, well, there is also a new section with respect to climate and geographic design criteria. I think, Tom. You had said that we're getting that already.
What page is that?
That's on page twenty one, eighty eight twenty seven.
Yes, with the adoption of the stretch code, we get a lot of that current information they're asking for within our plan submissions.
Out of the curve on that. That's it. So if there are any questions, we would have this on for a public hearing in this early December.
Okay, is there a deadline by which it needs to be adopted?
At year end.
Year end, okay.
So I'm sorry, Ed, you said it needs to be adopted by the end of the year?
Ideally by year end.
So you really.
I can't imagine this is the type that we're going to get a ton of comments are, given they're they're required, so.
No, you you're you're absolutely right. And yet the property maintenance law ended up being just tortured and.
These are required. We don't really have much of a choice.
Yeah. No, I was just wondering.
The what dates were you thinking twenty second?
No, I I was actually thinking the twenty ninth instead of December twenty ninth. Yeah, I'm doing it that way, okay? Rather than December, if if that's okay.
We have a few public hearings out there, right?
Budget?
Let's do the twenty ninth. Okay. All right, thank you.
Welcome.
The next thing we have is just the administrative items and then we'd be going into the town board meeting.
Your details.
We had a, okay, great. So administrative items. We have payment of claims. We have authorization to award the bid for the twenty twenty three coach bus services, which is Hudson Valley Charter for ninety four hundred dollars. We have authorization to accept the proposal for professional engineering and construction management services. For the Metro North Railroad Trenchless Water Mean Cross Project. This is engineering services. It went to the lowest responsible bidder. We had out of four, the bids ranged from two hundred and five thousand dollars and change to three hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars.
This is for where again?
This is the the crossing under the under the railroad trench.
Got it, got it.
For water main. And so we're recommending that it be awarded to Maganaro Engineering for two hundred and five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. The next is authorization to establish a capital project for the to purchase the emergency standby generator. And then the next thing, and that's going to be for eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's establishing the capital project. And then we're going to have an authorization to actually purchase a standby generator for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. This is the replacement for the one that had that catastrophic failure. It's for an amount not to exceed five hundred and twenty eight. Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, it's for five hundred and twenty eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and it's a Cummins. The next one is an authorization to establish a capital project and budget for a new recreation bus. I don't know if you've noticed, but we've been very nicely been able to borrow from Northeast Recreation, but it's time we get our own. So it's going to be for an amount not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And it's not listed on the administrative items, but it is included in your resolutions and that is. Authorization to approve the purchase of the recreation bus. Again, not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So we're very excited to be getting this new fourteen passenger bus. So that's great. Next is authorization to approve the purchase of a bench. So the town board in the past had approved fifteen hundred dollars for. Any a resident who would like to either donate in memory of or in honor of a resident. We have them all through town, our streetscape benches. It had the fifteen hundred dollars. You know, fast forward several years later, the bench is now fourteen hundred dollars and change and the plaque is another three hundred. So I'd like to ask the board for approval to raise the cost of the bench from the fifteen hundred to the eighteen hundred, just to be able to cover the costs of. Actually purchasing the bench on the plaque.
But this will be reimbursed to us.
It it someone's actually purchasing it. So they're purchasing it in honor of someone in memory.
But so why do we, why are we?
We're we're setting the price of the bench.
Got it.
To to approve the 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 purchase of the bench to the public of eighteen hundred from fifteen hundred.
Yes, good.
Sorry, I was not clear. Next is, we had asked for, actually at the behest of the Millwood West End Advisory Board. A reduction of the speed limit along Route one hundred to the New York State DOT. They have now sent us back a letter saying that. They will consider it, but only if they actually get a town board resolution requesting it. So this is going to be our. Authoriz, this is our request to you to authorize us to have a resolution to authorize the speed limit.
Yes.
And last but not least is authorization to approve the payment to the village of Pleasantville. This is for the water reconciliation. This was actually approved by and discussed by the board months ago and we didn't actually just get around to actually issuing the check. It's for three hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty two dollars and thirteen cents. It's a reconciliation over the past several years.
I feel like we adopted the resolution.
We actually didn't.
We didn't, we didn't.
So we 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 got, we, yeah, we discussed it. We got to the administrative items, but we never actually passed a resolution approving it. So we're going to approve it tonight.
Oh, okay.
I know, we, yeah, we we thought we had too. We had done all the discussions and met with them and everything created.
We went to it.
We didn't have the resolution.
We don't have the resolution. So we're going to have it tonight. It'll be fine. Okay, and that's all I've got for, if there's any questions on the administrative items? Okay, that's all we've got.
All right.
Ending the ending resolution to the consent agenda, setting the public hearing for the Uniform Building Code to November twenty ninth.
Okay, great. We'll do that in consent. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, Chris, are you still there? Where's your computer just still on?
Hey, Chris, come on.
All right, he, I think he he didn't.
I'm on if you need me.
Yes, no, no, Chris was going to come down here in person.
We could pass the resolution.
So we can pass resolutions. So, okay, so I think we are going to end our public, our work session and we are going to take a ten minute or less break, five to ten minutes. And we're going to come back and just open our very quick public meeting. All right, so let's just take a little adjournment. We'll be back. Okay, hi, Chris. Hi, everybody. Welcome, Chris. I would like to welcome everybody to the public meeting of Wednesday, November ninth. Can I please have a motion to open the public meeting?
I move to open the public meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we're going to go a little out of order tonight and we're going to start with our resolutions. So Vicki, I'll ask you to read all the resolutions tonight.
Yes, I move to authorize the appointment of Jessica Laumanns. As a member of the Recreation Commission for a term of seven years effective November first, twenty twenty two through October thirty first, twenty twenty nine.
Chris, can I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the appointment of Kellen Cantrell, Assistant Planner, as Technical Staff Support to the Climate Smarts Communities Task Force. For term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve a reimbursement to the village of Pleasantville in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and sixty two dollars and thirteen cents. To reflect operating surpluses from the operation of the Millwood Water Treatment Plant from twenty sixteen through twenty twenty one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just flip it over.
Okay. I move to approve adoption of the consent agenda as fully stated in the in the agenda. Is that okay, Ed?
With one addition, right, to set a public hearing?
Yes.
That the public.
Addition to set a public hearing.
With regard to the Uniform Building Code.
With regard to the Uniform Building Code.
At seven P M on November twenty ninth, twenty twenty two.
At seven P M, November twenty ninth, twenty twenty two.
At town hall.
At town hall.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty nine thousand, five hundred and forty two dollars and sixty nine cents. Listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detailed voucher detail report, both dated November seventh, twenty twenty two. Checks will be printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Thursday, November tenth, twenty twenty two.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. If those are all the resolutions, we can still hear a public comment with.
Two people, Chris wants to go home.
Don't you have a draft pack property line? Yes.
Yes. Okay, yes?
Well, I mean, you can't, you can't like continue the meeting without a quorum. So you could. Close the meeting and, but it's.
Okay.
Quickly ask for public comment.
Okay, is there a very quick public comment from anybody?
Yes. Hello, 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 everybody. I'm very, very grateful to be here and to see you. Particularly one very, very hardworking town board member. Who has endured a lot and is always, always doing what it can for the town. I also wanted to thank everybody on behalf of myself and all my fellow election workers. What a great job the town did to follow up. And I I just want to make it aware that the town was so concerned about about us who were working. We typically, we were up at four A M. We were at the site at at five A M. or thereabouts. The polls had to be opened at six and they were. And we didn't close until nine, nine P, nine P M, and we didn't get out of there until about ten o'clock or nine forty-five. So what I do is I wanted to say a personal thanks on behalf of all my fellow election workers for the terrific, terrific job that they did. They brought us a little care package, and boy, oh, boy, was that welcome. And, well, they weren't the only ones. The reason I'm holding these Reese's Pieces is not to advertise Reese's Pieces, but this is what I had distributed to all the poll workers, just just a little sustenance to to keep it going. Such a such an absolutely non non-political act, but just an act of kindness that was so nice and so appreciated. So thank you again for doing it, thank you, particularly to the town clerk and the appropriate staff just for putting these things together, they put it in a little thing and they wrapped it up and they had a nice top, and it almost looked like it was a holiday gift, it was wonderful.
I saw you there.
So I just wanna, I just wanna say thank you, thank you to all, to 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 bringing sustenance to to the election workers. And just really quickly, I know you wanna get out of here, to, I just also wanted to to support the project that we're about to start for writing down and 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 getting as codified as possible, just a how-to guide with the various town departments to make things better. And I wanna particularly thank the town board members who are here that have put so much time and effort into it in the other departments and going one to another to another, hope to get it so that it's it's good and useful. And now I will cease my comment, just but out of gratitude. I wanted to thank you for the sustenance you provided. This is not the, this is the bag I bought for the fellow election workers. This is not the bag that that was applied to us. Such a kindness.
Thank you, John.
Now, I'll shut up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online? All right. Okay, great, in that case, why don't we, we're gonna hold supervisor's report unless there's anything emergency you need to say for administrative report. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Good night, everybody, Chris, feel better.
Night, everybody. Thanks, Ally, you feel better, too.
Thanks.